Baldwin. Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLymon.
Here.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Okay, do we have a motion for Councilmember Baldwin?
So moved to excuse her.
Okay. All right, all in favor of excusing Councilmember Baldwin from the meeting tonight, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, okay, Councilmember Baldwin is excused, do we know why she's not here?
She's at an event with her children.
Oh, right on, okay. All right, we don't have any agenda modifications, we do have a certificate of appreciation and recognition for Caitlin Woolford, if I could read that. Hi. All right, certificate of appreciation and recognition presented to Caitlin Woolford. We thank you for your commitment and dedication as a student representative volunteer on the Bonny Lake Arts Commission since August 24th, 2021. And the city of Bonny Lake congratulates you on winning the 2023 Regional High School Art Show sponsored by Puget Sound Educational Service District. If everybody could.
Yeah.
Now, the risk of this is that you actually have to take a picture with me, and I apologize for that.
Mr. Mayor, she's an amazing painter, by the way.
Oh, yeah?
I have firsthand knowledge of it.
Very good. All right, we're moving on to public hearing, citizen comments, and correspondence. See how we, there's no public hearing, we will go to citizen comments. Everybody, this is your time to address the council on city business. The city will now enable the video and microphone for those attending virtually. You will need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and move to the virtual comments afterwards. When you come up to the dyes, you will have five minutes, please state your name and address for the record. So anybody wish to approach? Yep. Yes.
Hi, my name is Annie Gluever, I live at 7320 West Taps Highway East. I'm here today because I have concern about the safety at Allen York Park. Just last week, on Saturday, the 13th, there was a huge fight out at the park. And we could hear chanting and yelling from our house inside and outside, and I since learned that the fight involved guns, multiple police cars, and multiple aid cars. Think somebody was maybe seriously injured. Two days later, on Monday, there was a Little League game with eight and nine-year-olds that had to stop on the very first inning because of another fight and a confirmed gun on the lakeside. And two days after that, on Wednesday, I left my house at 6:45 to walk to the park to pick up my son, who is nine years old, from his Little League practice. Before I even left my driveway, I witnessed a large mob of teenagers yelling and beating up a man in front of my house. Sorry. I was curious about how far bullets can travel, so I looked it up. And a pistol, if it uses a nine-millimeter bullet, from what I read online, that can travel 1.3 miles. My house is .1 miles from the park, my kids go to school .8 miles from the park. And I'm concerned, the park is pretty unruly and unsafe. I've got kids, I don't let them go there. I would be surprised if anybody lets their family go there. And I understand that there's also plans to make the park bigger. While I love outdoor space, and it would be great, I am very concerned about this growing. I don't think this is behavior, we should be rewarding with more space. Anyway, that's what I wanted to say.
All right, thank you. I do appreciate you bringing this to the council's attention, I did hear about at least the first incident from the Assistant Chief, he and I were on a plane together, and so we talked about that. Didn't hear about the last two incidents, but I'm glad that you did point it out, and we will, I can assure you, our police department has been on top of it right now, but I'll find out a little bit more detail as far as what we're doing in investigation to try to quell that.
And that's my 11-year-old who we don't let him go to the park without us.
Okay. Absolutely, you can come up.
I'm hearing you correctly, sounds like you've already talked to the Police Chief, and you have next steps to do?
I have spoken with our Assistant Chief simply about the incident because quite literally, we were on a plane together last weekend for a conference that we had in Maryland. It had just happened, I hadn't heard any of the after effects or the investigation that had gone into it. I just got back to work yesterday, and the Chief and I have not talked about it, but it's something that I do plan on bringing up, especially after tonight, I'll be bringing it up before the end of the week, see what my calendar's like.
I can appreciate, but what does that look like? How do we track this? What are next steps? More than a conversation?
Okay, and this is not the appropriate forum to actually talk about that, I do appreciate your concern on that, I cannot tell you that until I speak with the Chief. What I can tell you is that it is addressed to the, to us and the council, and it's something that I'm going to take up before the end of the week.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just, we have a public safety committee, and it meets on the second Tuesday of every month at 3:30 upstairs, so that is June 13th, if you want to bring it up, come there as well, Police Chief will be there, we can talk afterwards if you don't have any answers before. But if you could also leave your name and number, and maybe an email address with the clerk, we can make sure we can reach out.
Absolutely, and if I do get any answers by the end of the week, we'd make sure to email you to tell you what we talked about.
That would be sufficient for accountability? I'm asking, like, I don't, you guys can solve it. Say there's a kind of public safety meeting?
Well, that's all we can do right now, we can't just solve the problem at the moment, now that we've become aware of it, we're going to take steps to try to be accountable for what has happened, and get to the source, and try to solve it, but I cannot tell you that right now.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, the next steps would be to attend a public safety meeting?
No, the next step is me talking to the Chief of Police. And maybe, and, well, not even maybe, you leave your information with our clerk, and you will get an answer one way or the other, as far as what the Chief and I spoke about.
So that would be the avenue for follow-up?
That would, the avenue for follow-up at the moment would be you coming to the public safety meeting. Me informing you as to what we talked about will be what will be at the end of the week. It very well could be that I could be telling you that we didn't have a chance to talk, but I doubt that's going to happen. But we're certainly not going to be in a position tonight to make any sort of false promises. I'm telling you what we are following up, and that's the best we can tell you right now.
Mr. Mayor, we have some on tonight's agenda we're going to talk about also, it's going to be on AB 2377, that's a start we're working on already. It's a, it's what we have, an ordinance coming forward tonight, you can see it on paper outside, you'll hear about when we talk about later tonight. We are talking about a little bit tonight, an ordinance tonight, they're going to be changing some things that we're doing right now.
With Allen York Park?
Hopefully Allen York Park.
That's fair, thank you.
Oh, not at all. Okay, anybody else for the good of the order?
I am Chris Wolford, I live at 10422 Springwood Drive East.
Would you happen to be related to Ms. Wolford from earlier?
Yes, I was your proud Papa.
Yes.
Anyway, but since we're on the subject of Allen York Park, I happened to be there a week ago Saturday, which was one of the hot days over that weekend, and I observed not what the lady over here did, fortunately, but it was very, very busy, and there were a number of cars in what is now the boat trailer parking lot, parked there without trailers. I did see tickets on a few of them, so that's good, but that could be a problem. And the other thing I noticed is that the, what is supposed to be the staging area for the boat launch, across the street from the boat launch, that starts by the restroom and goes down the shoulder by that parking lot by the ball field.
Yes.
Was completely full of parked cars, which contributes to the overcrowding and danger at the park. The boat launch was such an overcrowded mess that the boats that were trying to launch, since they couldn't stage across the street, were sitting there with their trailers sticking out into the road and blocking the road. I also observed two police officers, or at least police vehicles, sitting there by the boat launch, but I did not see any police officers doing anything. So, just thought I would come up and let you know what I observed, since, you know, this lady here has obviously indicated there's other problems going on at the park, so, thank you.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Evans.
Not that I can speak directly about the police officers, but when they park their vehicles there, they may be out on the Marine Service Unit boat.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, so that might be why there was no visible presence, they may have been out on the boat patrol.
Okay, and, you know, I'm a boater, I'll probably be in for my pass here pretty soon, but that is not a situation I would have wanted to have to encounter if I went there to launch my boat that day.
Sure, oh yeah, for sure.
Absolute zoo. And no, no police officers anywhere looking like they were doing anything to try and control any of it.
Hey, well, thank you for bringing that to us, our attention. When you say police officers, was Bonny Lake Police Department, or was it Pierce County Sheriff? Okay. All right, thanks, sir. Okay, anybody else for the good of the order?
Hello, Graham Satterwhite, 21200 South Prairie Road. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
And staff, as I said, my name's Graham Satterwhite, I'm the Development Manager with Midtown Properties, and behalf, and on behalf of Midtown Properties, I wanted to thank the council for your consideration of Item C of the full council agenda, Wazoo Development Agreement Amendment Resolution. We just wanted to express our appreciation for the opportunity to work with staff and city collaboratively on the amendment topics that Mr. Sullivan has discussed with you. We look forward to future work with Mr. Sullivan and staff crafting an amendment for your future consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Anybody else for the good of the order?
I'm Carrie Davidson, I live at 5119 Drive East. I was actually the mom that my son was playing baseball game when it got canceled, because there was a gun. Terrifying, I was there with my daughter. I've lived here for 40 years, my parents have lived here for 50, it's, it was, I was also driving through to go to their house, and two days before, in my car, was driving along West Taps, and the fight broke out around our car. There were people screaming outside of both the windows, the cops had to come running from the lakeside, and my kids are terrified inside of my car. I know you guys are going to be working on it, and something needs to happen, but also, like, my son has three more games at Allen York Park in the next two weeks, so I know it's going to take a while, and I know that's why I was a little concerned, it's like, can we get police support, police support there instantly? I mean, I don't even want to take my kid to the park that I was born and raised going to. So, I just, I don't know, I just, something needs to be done, and the parking is an issue too, like, I'm going there to watch my son's baseball game, and I'm driving around for 20 minutes trying to find a place to park, you know? It's awful, but like, my concern is more the guns and the rowdy, and we're sitting there walking, a girl walks in front of us, she was literally wearing a string for a bikini, not a string bikini, a string, a piece of string. And my daughter's looking at me like, where do we live? It's awful. And so, I, first, I mean, just that you guys know that this is going on, second, like, is there something that we can do immediately to have more police presence? So I feel comfortable taking my son to the game.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Normally, our Chief is actually in attendance, where is our Sergeant-at-Arms tonight?
In a conference out of state, or, you know, side.
Okay.
Out of the conference.
And I know where one of our Assistant Chiefs is, where's the other?
Off on vacation.
Okay, so.
Good timing.
Yeah, I would say that that is, that is good timing, I will, oh, yes, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do know, I saw an email, I believe, after this event, that they have tried to ramp up officers being there, both on-duty and off-duty officers, trying to pay people to come in to manage that problem. It's been a problem for years, and it's just going to continue to get worse. All I can tell you is, we're aware of it, and we have some things we're working on short-term and long-term. The short-term, I think, won't, it's not going to solve it, right? But it'll hopefully make it a little bit better. The long-term is what we really have to be going for this time, but thank you for, I'm so sorry that you went through that.
And, and I truly wish there was something we could do right now, immediately, but we're not passing this matter off, it will be something that we're going to be looking into.
I appreciate that, and if you guys can get more police presence, especially for the Little League games and the people that are there, like, that would, I know that would make me feel a little more.
Well, we won the state championship last year, we can't, we can't not misrepresent, I mean, I understand. All right. Well, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else for the good of the order? All right, what's your name, Randy?
Randy doesn't speak. I live at 18609 77th Street Court East, I'm here to talk about Allen York Boat Launch. One thing that I noticed on Saturday when I was launching my boat, because the boat launch has a cable lock across it, people get the impression that it's not a boat launch that's being used. And so those docks are being used as private docks, they're fishing off the docks, they're hatching their jet skis to it, and it's creating more chaos and more pandemonium. So that's, that's other than what, I can confirm what everyone said here, I witnessed it, I was there on Saturday, I was there on Monday, and the parking lot, I can say, on Saturday, just like you described, but by Monday, there was two Bonny Lake Police Department in the parking lot, and nothing but boat trailers, so I believe they've got that problem resolved. But there's still an issue with the staging on the right to park, to, when you drive up to the boat launch, there's a staging area, you can pull off to the side and wait for your turn. Well, that is being continually blocked, even currently.
Okay.
And the dock was pandemonium and chaos, there were people fishing, calling people names, but racial slurs, I was absolutely blown away. So I don't think that people are aware that that is a boat dock that is intended for Bonny Lake residents, requires a pass.
Yes.
And so when they come over from the, from the park, or they come over from different areas, they think it's not used, and they're tying up their jet skis, and they're fishing off, and it's just not what it's intended to be.
No, absolutely, and we do have a lot of non-citizens, especially even outside of Pierce County that come to you.
Hopefully, long-term is to open, open it up to the public at some point, we open up some more boat trailer parking, but for now, this is the best we can do.
All right, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak?
Scott Charbonneau, 7214 194th Avenue East. Saturday, we were down there too. It was a little scary. The kids were jumping the fence while the police were there. And, you know, I talked to Dieter afterwards, last week, and this new proposal to make the park bigger, he personally said he didn't like it, because there's no way that they can control it. Now, how are they going to control it when it's bigger? As far as the boat launch, like, like you said, a lot of the problem with a boat launch is you have cars that are there that are unloading kayaks, unloading picnic stuff that are in where you got to launch your boat. Now, if they have a kayak, they should have to have a permit to launch a kayak also, because it is a boat technically. If they want to park across the street and carry it across, I can see that. But if they're going to clog up the boat ramp where everybody's at, then that's, you know, they should have a permit to do that. And as far as the park goes, we'll get into that when that time comes.
All right.
Okay?
Thanks, sir. All right, anybody else for the good of the order?
Lori Charbonneau, if I live on 194th, I want to say a big thank you to our Bonny Lake cops that were down there that night, because we were down there just giving our rescue dog a swim down there. All of the kids came together and started fighting over by the snack shack, jumped the fence. Scott and I both have been in the Vegas shooting, and it brings back PTSD, so that can't happen, we've lived here 35 years, and we've enjoyed that park for that many years with our own kids that have grew up here, and it can't happen.
No, that's true, and I'm sorry for your experience in Vegas, that was very.
I just, it can't happen again.
Anybody else for the good of the order? Hi, Mr. Decker.
Council Mayor, I am past Councilmember Dan Decker, I live at 2170 Streets, Bonny Lake, Washington. The Eighth Amendment, excessive bail shall not be required, nor excessive fines imposed, nor cruel and unusual punishment inflicted. The part of the Eighth Amendment of interest is a cruel and unusual punishment. Not all of the, not all of the Bonny Lake police know what the Eighth Amendment means. That's why some of Bonny Lake Police batter citizens without cause. For example, no arrests, no detainment, and most important, no cause to stop a citizen. Some Bonny Lake Police Officers think it's correct to make contact and batter the people. The Eighth Amendment prohibits punishment that is corporal. No citizen of the United States shall fear corporal punishment being inflicted on them ever, except maybe in the city of Bonny Lake. When a police officer does commit the crime of assault, corporal punishment, as stated in RCW 9A 36, assault, physical harm, to act under color of state law. To act means to act beyond the bounds of lawful authority, but in such a manner that the unlawful act were done while the official was reporting or pretending to act in the performance of his official duties. The unlawful act must consist of an abuse or misuse of power which possessed by the official only because he is an official. Title 42 USC Section 1983 Civil Action for Deprivation of Rights. The Civil Action for Deprivation of Rights Act is commonly known as Section 1983. Each police officer does take an oath to uphold the laws of the State of Washington to include the state and federal constitution. The city of Bonny Lake must afford training for all city employees concerning the Constitution. When the police take an oath to protect, in literal, state law and the Constitution, then training concerning law, laws of RCW and the Constitution must happen. And further, I noticed that Finance Committee issue AB 23-9, Motion M 23-91. I'm hoping that tonight, from what you've heard from others besides myself, that this motion gets tabled, I would appreciate that, and I'm sure a lot of people in the city would also. And that money could be better spent in other areas of the city that could afford the need for the money right now, as we are, what we call broke. Thank you very much, council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Decker. Have we anybody else in person for the good of the order? Okay, we will now start with those who are virtual. Anybody virtual, you will have five minutes, please state your name and address for the record. Okay, I see nobody coming through virtual, so we will now disable all video and microphone from those attending virtually. And we do have some correspondence, Madam Carter, could you read that, please?
The city clerk's office received three emails that council members received prior to the council meeting. Two were, two emails were from Brett Wise and Joshua Nisseth in support to keep Ballfield Four as a softball field instead of a parking lot, and the third was from Andrea Way, President and CEO of the Tacoma Pierce County Chamber in support of the Teragon Project.
All right, thank you, Madam Carter. All right, next is committed reports, could we hear from the Finance Committee, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee met tonight at 5:00 PM upstairs, we had a personnel update, they have a new online onboarding system, they're working with, with the seasonal hires, and they're hoping that that will move forward with all new hires in the future, as long as everything works out, so it's kind of a testing period. We talked about AB 2388, Resolution 3156, it's the SDC Study Change Order, Excise Tax Support, basically would be bringing FCS back on June 6th, and paying, they realized that we are actually paying more for excise tax than we should be, and it could be a savings there, they believe, of somewhere it's around $100,000. So definitely good to bring them back and look into that a little bit more, that is on consent agenda for tonight. We talked about AB 2384, Motion 23-84, Authorization for Use of ARPA Funds to Hire Two Temporary Full-Time Employees for the Parks Division Services for One Year. That's for just this year, and in the future, it would either have to come out of general fund, or it would be another way of funding, so looking at MDP, or MPD, or BNO tax, or something like that in the future, potentially. And that's slated for a June 13th meeting. And then, we talked about AB 2391, this is a motion over the remainder of the ARPA funds, it's about $2.7 million going into the public safety salaries and emergency management salaries. And that is, I think, on finance issues tonight. And I would just say that that is in regards to money that the state, or the federal government, rather, is going to try and take back, and so we needed to put it into a particular fund in order to keep those funds and move forward, because we've lost money through COVID and whatnot, and that's what the money is actually for, so that's to move it forward. And then, we approved our minutes, we had an open discussion about sales tax being down the last two months by 20%, so we're definitely keeping an eye on that. The other, the other ones are still up, but the sales tax, specifically restaurants and retail, was down, so. And that concluded our meeting.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter, I had heard that about, about the ARPA funds as well under AB 2391, that if we don't earmark it, we will lose it, and I believe our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Ryan, Ms. Ryerson has popped in as well, did you have a comment, Ms. Ryerson? Okay, shaking her head, so let's move.
Yeah, I'll wait until we get there.
Okay. All right, Community Development Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Community Development Committee did meet on May 16th, of course, all these community meetings are open to the public, anytime they can come. We had an ordinance that we recommended to move forward, which is the Map Streets Ordinance that's coming forward tonight on your agenda, that is cleaning up some of those map streets, or mainly the East Town area, and defining those, because we know we did all that development out there, the development agreements for the new development on Fort 10, so they had to move some of the streets around in that area to accommodate all the new development. Also, cleaning up the last part of that Housing Action Plan, the Grant Regulatory Reform Memo that's coming back through, you know, the finishing up all that stuff, and again, that's, you know, as, as the council did, it hasn't been changed, but that was with all the council recommendations in it, so they're, they're not trying to do anything odd there, in my opinion, that's recommended for passage. Also, a discussion about Also, a discussion about the Allen York Playground Equipment, which is the new area, of course, by the new field. If you've been up there, there's a section for the new playground equipment that would be ADA-type equipment. And staff's doing a great job at looking at different auctions out there, because that, you know, it's not as simple as just simply throwing the equipment on the ground, because you have ADA requirements. Then you have considerations between the, like, the total cost of ownership of, you know, what can we do if we put the cheaper version in there? Is that going to, you know, put the cost on labor of maintenance? Or how do we do all that? So those will be coming forward at some point as a recommendation for Council, but that was just a discussion on that. We looked at our minutes, of course, and then we did have a proposal where we were looking at some of the parking restrictions over there. And these are just for parking passes for the Allen York area. I think Public Works and all coming up with some great solutions for like a mobile ability to actually pay for parking. So, you know, one of the many things that the city's looking at for the Allen York area to try to help the situation over there. I think one of the ideas is what the free parking and parking all over the place is kind of identified as a, a bad thing. So this could be a part of many things that we could do over there. So they're looking at doing that. And then that was our discussions for the evening. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Councilmember Swatman. As long as we keep that issue open and running, that would be great. And moving on to Public Safety Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety Meeting will be meeting on Tuesday, June 13th, upstairs on the second floor at 3:30 PM.
And it sounds like we do have a couple of new issues to actually address with the... Thank you, Councilmember Evans. I do not see any other reports. We will now have the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
No move, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect that it was a unanimous vote, 6-0, for the consent agenda for May 23rd, 2023. Let's move on to the finance issue. Madam Clerk.
This is AB Motion 2391. The council motion would be to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to designate the remaining $2,985,374 of the American Rescue Plan Act to police and emergency management salaries for the period May 1st, 2023 through November 30th, 2023, or until the remaining funds are spent.
No move, second.
Do we have any discussion on the matter? Uh, Deputy Mayor Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question as far as the amount here, because I know we were talking in finance earlier about some going towards the temporary two full-time employees with parks for the year. We were kind of thinking it's going to be approved. I don't know if we need to amend this for a different amount. Maybe Ms. Ryerson could expand on that.
If you guys approve the, if Council approves the item for the parks at the, I believe that was on the June 13th meeting, I will just reduce this, this number. This motion is dated, or I'm sorry, not dated. The numbering is after the fact. The parks one is before mine, so I will make sure the auditors know that, know that money is part of parks. So this would actually be right around 2.7 after you guys decide if you're going to approve that or not.
Thank you.
Well, make sure to get the change in there, Ms. Ryerson. I mean, those 84 cents I think needs to go into, and we need to be precise for the auditor. All right, any further discussion regarding this AB matter? Okay, I believe we are ready for a vote. All in favor of Motion M 2391, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing no opposition, I believe we have a 6-0 unanimous vote. Next issue, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2375, Resolution 3152. The council motion would be to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to take certain actions to increase housing availability, diversity, and affordability through regulatory streamlining and cost reduction.
No move, second.
Do we have any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, we are ready to vote on the matter. All in favor of Resolution 3152, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, we have a 5-1 vote on this matter. Resolution 3152 is passed. Next issue, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2386, Ordinance D 2386. The council motion would be to amend Chapter 13.04 of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code relating to water rates.
No move, second.
Do we have any discussion on the matter? All right, hearing no discussion, all in favor of Ordinance D 2386, say aye.
Aye.
How about aye? I said hi. Okay, all opposed? Okay, we have to believe to get the count correct, we have two nays, four ayes. So the resolution has passed, or ordinance has passed.
Actually, I was a nay.
Oh, okay. So we are 3 and 3.
Hot dang.
Can you vote on this? We're waiting for the mayor to have to vote on something, right? He should be able to vote on this.
There is a first sometime. Well, you know, I vote aye on the matter, so.
It's an, it's an ordinance, so you cannot break ties on ordinances, I'm saying.
I could do what?
You cannot break a tie on an ordinance.
Oh, okay, so what do we do?
135A 12100, so.
Right, where's the hat?
Yeah, you can't break that tie. So it's a tie, which means the motion has failed. This can be moved forward to another meeting when we have a full council.
All right, so.
I do have a question. Is there, because I know that we had asked before for more explanation on this particular ordinance and we were supposed to have somebody come and speak to us and let us know more about this particular ordinance. And I haven't heard anything from that person. So I can't, without a full understanding of what this ordinance is, how it's going to impact the citizens of Bonny Lake, I can't vote for this until I'm able to speak with the expert.
Okay, Ms. Ryerson, I believe you had your hand up.
Yeah, am I allowed to speak? I know this has already been voted on, so.
Um, but yes, I believe you can.
Okay. So FCS is actually going to come out to speak to the SDC portion. And the SDC portion has been removed from this water rate ordinance. The questions you had in regards to fire flow, I believe, were answered by Mr. Johnstone as well as the attorney, Ms. Robinson, in an email about a week and a half ago, I believe. So I'm not sure of any other questions that are out there. This does not include the SDC rates, which are going to be addressed by FCS. I do not have any contract out there for FCS to come back to talk about water rates whatsoever.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ryerson. Okay, well, the matter has been, oh, Madam Clerk?
So if, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
If, if this answer, and I'm happy to reiterate what I talked about, about the fire flow, if that satisfies Councilmember Fullerton, and you would like to revisit this, a motion for reconsideration would be in order by anyone who, who voted against the ordinance.
Well, it was, it was SBS that came out and spoke to us about the, all the abbreviations. So he can answer any other questions that I have about this, because there was questions about how we were going to finance all of this, and we hadn't actually had a full council discussion. It didn't come to full council. It was in a workshop, which we didn't vote on. So there are some more questions, but I don't know what I'm, what I can and can't say, so.
I'm, I guess I'm curious, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Right.
Smooth, take away the summer rates and the winter. Sorry, Sheri.
Right, and so, no, you're fine, absolutely fine. So I guess I'm a little confused, because my understanding was the water rates weren't the issue, that the issue has to do with the system development charge or the SDC charge. And so I have put together a contract which was approved on the consent agenda for FCS to come out to discuss only system development charge and my excise tax issue. I have not added any other additional conversations with FCS for water rates. My understanding was that the water rate wasn't the issue. It was the combining of the water rates with the system development charges in one ordinance created the issue.
Bring it to a workshop. Oh, that'd be up to, you know, we need to take it up with the Deputy Mayor about bringing, bringing that back. My understanding is exactly what Ms. Ryerson says, we're bringing in FCS simply to talk about the SDC. They did excise the SDC part from the water rates at this point, which was now voted upon. But if anybody who did vote know wishes to bring a motion to reconsider, given the information that they've just been given before we move on, we'll have another chance at that. And hearing not that, I believe the vote right now has been settled at 3-3, meaning that the...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Oh, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My thought is, at this point, we can bring it back for a workshop in the future, giving council members a little bit more time to hopefully have some answer, questions answered. My concern would be that FCS has a contract to answer specific things, and I'm guessing they would probably need a new contract for that, or it would need to be amended in some way. So we would have to work through that.
And is that correct, Ms. Ryerson?
Correct. And I was anticipating that there might be further questions regarding the water rate issue, which is why I sent an email out asking if anybody had any questions, to please let me know so I can get those answers to you. So at this point, summer rates are implemented. They go into effect June 1, and people will start seeing them on their July bill.
Okay, so if, Sheri, if this passes, then the, the water rates would not triple in the summer?
Once the effective date starts, correct. So we are too far past. It would include one cycle each for county and city. I didn't want to make it unfair and only do, you know, city being the higher fee. There's the 30-day, forgive my probably non-technical term of rescission clause. So regardless, if you pass this tonight and change the date, it's the summer rates go into effect June 1. So there's no getting around June 1. So there'll be one billing for county, one billing for city on the summer rates, and then summer rates would go away.
Now, just to be clear on that.
If you were to pass this.
Yeah, if, if the matter was to pass, then we've already passed the deadline for the, for the June cycle, and the summer rates do apply to that, meaning the tier rates with the usage, and it goes up and they do pay more money. But if, and if it fails like it initially did right now, then the summer rates stay throughout the entire summer, at least at this point. And we have the same position that we had this time last year, that we have summer rates that are there, we have the tiers that go on, and people will be paying the more money throughout the entire summer. Is that correct?
Correct, for three cycles.
However, if it does pass, we can get rid of the, the remaining cycles in, for, for the summertime and only get hit with the, with the summer rates for June. Correct?
June and July, so that the city's not paying more than, yeah. So I, I tried to make it fair. You can certainly eliminate the July 1. We have time, but then your city residents are paying one month of summer and your county residents are not. So I was trying to make it fair.
I see. Okay. Oh, Councilmember... Want to make a motion to reconsider?
You can't.
You can, you voted for, oh, oh, yeah, would only have to be... Oh, okay, yes, Councilmember Fullerton.
Now I forgot what I was going to ask. So this particular bill now, or ordinance is, did, did we approve, is this part of the using 2 million of the ARPA funds to help lower the water rates? No.
No, but what is included is the loan that was...
The loan.
Yeah, so there's a loan that Ryan will bring forward, Mr. Johnstone, in the future for the Drinking Water Revolving Fund State Loan. Really low interest rate. I believe he told us it was, at a council meeting, I believe he told us it was like 2% or something. I don't recall exactly. He can probably let you know the number. But yes, that, that is included, and that's what's reducing the rates from what you saw in the FCS presentation initially.
And does this bring us to the monthly billing cycle yet? So that it can kind of help people budget their water rates?
We are working on that internally. We are not there yet. We ran a... This ordinance does not do that. We did run a cycle and we found some hiccups, so we're working through those hiccups and we hope to have them worked out possibly by the beginning of the year. So that's our new goal, is a January start on monthly billing.
And then, if I remember correctly, if we didn't, if we do pass this, then, and we get the loan, then that can bring the raise of the water rates to like 3.0% instead of 11%? If there's a, if there is a rate in, in the water? If we get the loan, then it would be 3.0% raise instead of 11%?
Yeah, I believe that's what's in here. I'm pulling it up right now. Yeah, so 1304, so page 110 of your packet. The rate would be based on January, I'm sorry, August 1st, 3% per year through January 1st, 2028.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the loan, I'm sorry, the loan was approved. We do have access to the loan. Brian just hasn't brought it forward for approval, is my understanding.
Okay, and this doesn't have anything to do with the SDC charges? This is just specifically on the water and what we're going to do with the water?
Yes.
Yes, completely removed all system development charges out of this, so that you guys could have further conversations, which will happen June 6.
Okay. Can I make a motion as a no vote to reconsider?
Do we have a second? Does it have to be one of the...
I'll second it.
Okay. All right, so all in favor of reconsidering the vote on...
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Okay, let's, let's have any discussion on the motion to reconsider?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Swatman, thank you.
Yeah, no, my main reason for opposing this is the fact that it moves the charges from the extraordinarily high users to the rest of the city. So there are, it's a great advantage to people that are the very small portion of the people that use an extraordinary amount of water. They're going to be charged a lot less with this particular ordinance, and those fees have to come from somewhere, because it is a revenue-neutral proposal. So it's going to raise everyone's rates in the city to compensate for the few that want to use water. So I'm kind of leaning on the no side on this. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion to reconsider? Okay, hearing no further discussion, we're ready to vote on the motion to recon, to reconsider D 2386. Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have, and I did hear two nays on that. I did not hear...
Aye.
Okay, so 42 to reconsider the vote. So in that favor, do we have to go through the motion and seconding and discussion part again? All right, how about we start at the very beginning? To get this crystal clear, as hopefully our water will be. All right. Madam Clerk, could you read the ordinance once again, please?
This is AB 2386, Ordinance D 2386. The council motion would be to amend Chapter 13.04 of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code relating to water rates.
Okay, do we have a motion?
No move, seconded.
Do we have any further discussion on the matter? Okay, Councilmember Swatman.
Nope, wait.
Oh, oh, Councilmember McLeymans, apologies.
I just want to echo Councilmember Swatman's position that, you know, as a revenue-neutral position that this does transfer, right, the responsibility for the water from the people that are high users to everybody else. So while I endorse like getting rid of the summer rates, it's like, is there a better solution than the current one? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Swatman. Any further discussion before we take it to a vote? All right, oh, yes, Councilmember Fullerton.
So if this, if this doesn't pass, then are we taking this back to the table and rediscussing other ways to lower the water rates or make it so that the high-end users are not making it more responsible? Because I, I feel like by lowering the water rates in the summer and not having those... Because I feel like by lowering the water rates in the summer and not having those triple rates, that that's actually going to help everybody, the whole entire community. And then by having monthly billing, they're going to be able to budget better, and they're not going to have these huge summer, or these summer rates. I don't feel that there's that many high-end users that it's going to make somebody else who's just a residential user have to pay more. But I don't know if there's a way to balance that out and make it fair. But I, like I said, I don't think that there's so many high-end users that are using so much water that it's actually going to raise the rates on the rest of the citizenry.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just say that moving to this rate is fair for everybody, in my view, because the rate is the rate. You pay for the water, you pay for the volume, and that's it. So I see it as being fair. I can understand where Councilmember McLeimans, Councilmember Swatman are coming from. However, I think it's set up fair if you just say this is the rate.
Okay, do we have any further discussion on the matter before we take it to a vote? Okay, hearing no further discussion on the matter, all in favor of ordinance D-2386? Say aye?
Aye.
So we do have, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4 votes on that, all opposed.
Nay.
And we have 2. So going back to what I wrote down about half an hour ago, the vote, this ordinance, D-2386, has been passed by a 4-2 vote. Okay, let's move on. Madam Clerk, do we have another ordinance to consider?
This is AB 2377, ordinance D-2377. The council motion would be to amend portions of Chapter 10.36 of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code regarding parking restrictions.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? Councilmember McLeimans.
Yeah, I think this is important to pass, especially in light of the testimony we heard tonight. I think it will help. It does solve problems. Those are, some of the problems that are there are very hard to solve, right? Especially for government agency. Though I would like to propose, I think we've lumped in the park parking issue with the sunset clause on the parking in Sky Island. And I would like to separate those 2. So I would like to make a motion that we amend this to strike line C from this ordinance that deals with the Sky Island and that we reconsider that at workshop or another council meeting.
Do we have a second? Oh, oh, okay.
This was discussed at a public safety meeting, and all 3 of the Public Safety Committee agreed that keeping-- and I wanted, I was going to say, I wanted to thank you for your thoughtfulness 2 years ago to put this sunset clause in there, based on what our police chief had to say, call volumes being down in that area, being that it's not intended for a parking area, being that it's just a gravel area, it's not engineered for that. We, the 3 of us in the Public Safety Committee, agreed that we should remove that sunset clause at this point. And so it was addressed, it was brought up. We did have a discussion on it. But that's why we wanted to send it here instead of a consent agenda, just to make sure we had the discussion on it. But it was discussed, and we did have Chief Jeter's suggestion of keeping, or removing that sunset clause.
Do we have a second on Councilmember McLeimans' motion? Oh, how about another?
Yeah, I, so I actually spoke with the president of the Homeowners Association at Sky Island, and I had spoken to 3 different homeowners that live right above where that parking area was. Because personally, I was complaining about it. I like to park there in the summer and watch the sunset. So I was kind of against the parking, no parking signs. However, after speaking to them and all of the similar issues to what was going on at Allen York Park, where they had teenagers partying and drinking and leaving all of their trash behind and making all kinds of noise and playing their music really loud, it was really disturbing. Because those people, their backyard is literally butted up against that gravel area. So they weren't able to have their barbecues and enjoy the sunset because it was too noisy on the street. So I did vote for leaving the signs because I was advised by, you know, the people who live right above the area, as well as the Homeowners Association, realizing that it is public property and it's city, the city owns that street. It was a hard decision, but I did go ahead and vote for this because of the people that were affected and who I had spoken to, so.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We enacted this during COVID because there were all kinds of issues, and Councilmember McLeimans made the idea to do a kind of sunset clause on there for a reason. I think that we, I would feel comfortable removing them for now, understanding that if this type of behavior comes back or continues at that particular location, you put the sign, you can come back to council, we can put the signs back. I try not to trample on rights and that kind of thing where we can. And this is one of those, like, it's a minor thing as far as parking or whatnot, but it's an area that's available to citizens of the city. And so I would feel comfortable removing them for now. I don't think there's a huge cost involved. There would be a huge cost in putting them back. I know it's a little bit of a pain for our Public Works Director, sorry. But I think that is worth it for the citizens.
You know, we can take them and then put them over in Allen York Park.
Right.
Councilmember Fullerton.
I could consider doing it as a temporary, just to see for the summer how it goes. And if it gets rowdy and out of control again, then they could approach the council. And if we hear about anything going crazy, then we could reconsider putting them back. If it's not, if it's something that could be done fairly quickly, but something I'd have to consider.
Councilmember Watson.
I'd like to second Mr. McLeimans' motion.
Oh, good.
I was surprised it's got, came this far to us. It never was before, a restriction. I don't think we should have those signs there right now, anyone see how it does? I would agree with it.
Okay, and in going with the order, you've now seconded the motion. We have had discussion. Is there any further discussion on the fact that now the motion has been seconded on removing the sunset clause from the ordinance?
And bringing--
Oh, Councilmember Evans.
One, it's a two-part, his motion was to split.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just on--
Clarity, point of order, I didn't hear that. I heard a motion to strike something out of the--
No, he wants to move it to, he wants to take it out of this ordinance.
He wants it to be a separate ordinance.
A separate.
So we take 2 votes on it tonight?
So that we're not--
The question, no, not tonight. Because I think I'd like to discuss it more and understand the police call volume, if there really was. Okay, so we're, and we're in discussion, okay? So thank you, Deputy Mayor Carter, for, you know, bringing us back to why we passed this to begin with. And my concern was, what was that? Was there a significant issue prior to COVID on that street? I know there was a significant number of citizens that did park there and did use it for like the sunsets or watching, you know, those sorts of things.
Frankly, they still do. I mean, don't want to run over you, but yeah, it's, those parkings, they take it as in your suggestion rather than--
So--
That would suggest probably--
So anyway. So anyway, I just wanted to reconsider it. But my big thing is that, you know, there is an urgency to Allen York Park. We should deal with that. So I want to get that passed. And if we really do want to consider this, I, this is something I, I think the council's good at communication, and I think a workshop would be a good time to get the full understanding. Because I think it was good, the thing I don't know if you pointed out was what Councilmember Fullerton pointed out, which is that the Sky Island community is in favor of no parking there, right? And so I think a full discussion about that, because it's not-- I concur with Deputy Mayor Carter. I don't know that keeping them there is warranted any longer based on pre-COVID conditions, right? And are we going to return to those conditions? Is it going to be a problem?
Mr. Mayor? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Councilmember Evans.
I appreciate all this. It is a beautiful area. It doesn't stop people from being able to go there. However, just strictly from an engineering standpoint, we wouldn't allow people to park on any other sidewalk road, even if there is a median to pull into. Our city engineers have said this is not designated parking space. The gravel in there is not intended to be driven on and pulled out from the rocks in the roadway caused hazards to vehicles and passengers walking by that it may spit out from the side and hit them. So far as, I get the idea that it is a public street, but again, we wouldn't allow just any other street. If Church Lake Road had a median like this with gravel, we wouldn't be considering this. We would still probably have a no parking area in that area because it is not engineered for that. So strictly from an engineering standpoint, and the city's engineering requests, engineers requesting this is not intended to be a parking area, and the police department's wishes to keep these signs in place because of the fewer calls that they have received because of this, along with, you know, the actual people that are impacted from it, which is the HOA and the residents that live right there. I'm going to be a no on the motion and a yes on leaving it in, however that breaks down.
Okay. Any further discussion before we vote on the, on the motion?
On the motion.
Okay.
Could you clarify the motion, please?
The, I was afraid you were going to ask me that. The motion, and I want to make sure to get the language right on this. So Councilmember McLeimans, you are moving to excise what we have colloquially called the sunset clause, which is making the parking pro-- Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Madam Clerk, that's why I'm asking.
That's what I was thinking. Yep.
Okay. And so, Part C?
The requirement.
Oh, okay, the actual ordinance, and it would be to excise Part C.
Right, section--
There we go. So let's have, on the motion-- Okay, Section 1. Okay, the motion to excise Section 1, Subpoint C. Say aye?
It's an amendment.
Aye.
Any opposed to the amendment?
Nay.
Okay, so we do have a vote of 5 to 1 to excise it.
Okay.
Okay. Now, let's move to the ordinance itself. With the exception-- Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Sullivan.
Sorry, we got this ordinance done kind of pretty quickly, and we got a late comment from our municipal court on a change that we need to make to the ordinance to make sure it's consistent with the way that the new state law does for tickets. So in the penalty section, which is on page 120 of your packet, in Subpoint C, the late penalty cannot be more than $25. So we would, we need to basically remove the addition of $125 and go back to just the standard $25 for the late penalty. And then it says within 15 days. There was a state law that passed that said it's 30 days if it's provided to them, 33 days if it's mailed. So we would add that language in instead of 15 days.
Okay, and this is Section 1?
No, this would be Section 5, Subpoint C.
Subpoint C?
So I guess the amendment, if it would be acceptable to the original maker and the seconder, so it gets rolled into the main motion, would be to delete the addition of $125 and keep the $25 penalty, and then change 15 days to 30 days if provided to them or 33 days if mailed.
And is that consistent with the RCW?
That's consistent with the RCW.
Okay. And Councilmember Ordinance?
I make a motion to amend this as Jason Sullivan just recommended.
Yes. We have a second. Does anybody want to discuss?
Second.
Before, please.
Second.
Okay, hearing no discussion on the matter, all in favor of amending Section 5, Subsection C to reflect what our revised Code of Washington says about this? Say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that has been amended unanimously to have that happen. Are we ready to go to vote on the ordinance itself? No, we're not. Okay, Councilmember Watson.
Been trying to say something on this ordinance.
Okay.
You know, we are aware of what's going on at Allen York Park.
Yes.
And a lot going on. This is our first step that we put together to help restrict parking on 194th, I believe, and 192nd over there, am I correct? That's a real problem. The problem is also the boat launch. We're aware of that. This helps solve that problem. Gives them more control down there for the police department.
Yes.
This is a step forward. We're already talking about other parking controls, that who can park there, where they can park, including areas around the boat launch stuff. So we are working on this. And when we had the issue to last weekend, or 2 weeks ago, it was a hot section time for us, and the police hadn't planned on having our security from outside the city come that time. They're coming now. But they got too hot before we were prepared for it. And now we have those coming here on the weekends for us, too. I mean, and plus, we had Pierce County Sheriff down there. We had Buckley, we had Sumner and all of us. And Pierce County used tears on a few people, along with one of our police officers that weekend, too. So it was quite a situation down there.
Right.
So we are working, it's a lot of areas we have to work on together. This is our first step to help solve the problems down Allen York Park. And I think with the council right now is going forward, a lot of good ideas, along with our police, and making changes down there.
Oh, that is a point well taken.
Public safety, I want to make sure that was out for everybody.
Councilmember Fullerton.
So I was also wondering, do we have any estimates? Or is the new park open, the Moriarty Parking Park area? Because that's got like 120 parking spots to it. So for car parking, they could certainly use that for the park.
So what we found with that weekend that we had the issues was that, in hindsight, what we believe part of the problem was is that we did open that parking lot at Field 5, and it just invited more people than we were prepared to handle. And talking with the chief, that's kind of the debrief that we took away from that. Obviously, that parking lot will be open at some point in the future. We are looking at how maybe that occurs. So perhaps that parking lot is not just generally left open all the time. I don't know. We'll bring, we can certainly come back and talk more about that in the future. But we believe that was, that was a big problem with that Saturday, was that there was just way more people there. We don't currently have any security in place. We know that there was a lot of underage drinking up in that parking lot. So there's some problems to address before we feel free, we can leave that parking lot.
With that, so that won't help to prevent people parking on the street, which is the setup for the boat launch, by opening up those additional parking spaces so that people do not park on the street? We probably need to get a boat launch only setup signs for that gravel area.
Things are already there.
They're already there?
He's working--
So are they getting ticketed then, or?
So in talking with the chief, he did instruct his officers, and there were tickets written and vehicles impounded over that weekend. That just needs to continue.
Okay.
Okay. Before we move on, Mr. Vodapich, this, this issue actually is becoming pretty important on this, rather than me just having a casual one-on-one with the chief office. Could you find a time before the week's up for you, me, Mr. Johnstone, and quite possibly all the directors, if we have time for that? But to schedule a meeting, as you know, after 4:30 because of certain conditions on this. But you can try to do that before the end of the week?
I can certainly try, but I believe the chief is not back in town until after--
Yeah, it would be, I do know that. He has communicated with us, though, so see if, see if he has any availability on that as well. All right, thank you, Mr. Vodapich. All right. Council? Oh.
Just to piggyback off of what Councilmember Watson said, we couldn't talk about it earlier because that forum is more information for you guys to provide to us. It's per our code, the communication back to you guys has to be pretty limited. And, but we do have contracts with Pierce County Security. The contract doesn't start until Memorial Day weekend, which is this weekend. The original boat launch wasn't supposed to happen until Memorial Day weekend, this weekend. So because the lake was full, policy was when the lake's full, we can open up the lake at that, or we can open up the launch at that point. So that happened sooner than anticipated. The contracts for Pierce County Security had already been in place, but we couldn't get them out there in time because the weather kind of had a quick turn on it, and the contract hadn't quite-- the contract hadn't quite entered into execution yet. So, um, starting this weekend, we will have four officers from Pierce County Security out there, um, as well as our other officers. And like, um, the mayor had mentioned, uh, we'll be working with our off-duty officers and, and our on-duty officers and try and make sure we have a, a larger police presence there as well as the security. So hopefully that will at least be, you know, the, this, the start of something better, but at least it's the start.
Yeah. That heat wave was a surprise to everybody. Okay. Councilmember McClyman's.
Yes. I had a question about the security. Um, is that the parking lot, uh, the new parking lot will be closed this weekend? Is that what I'm to understand?
At this point, there are no plans to open up that parking lot.
Okay. And should we entertain, um, increasing the budget for security so that we have uniformed security at that parking lot when we do open it?
We, we do have contracts for four right now and, and if we can get the boat launch, uh, or the boat parking currently under control, we may be able to transition over one, but we need to keep two in the park at all time. One at the launch and then one at the, the trailer parking, um, which we may be able to do some roaming. That would be up to the chief and his, his staff to, to make that direction. But, uh, we did increase it from two to four from last year's budget to this year.
Okay. Councilmember Ford.
I'm a little surprised because, um, you know, we, I thought we were actually opening up the new ballpark, um, sometime this spring. And, um, so I feel like that needs to be open for car parking because that was one of the original plans when we built that was if there's not, the ball fields aren't being used for tournaments or whatever, then people can park their cars and go to the, um, to the park. Uh, the reason like, um, council member Evans stated that we had such an issue was because we actually had not technically opened the boat launch yet and we didn't have our security there. So, um, hopefully, cause otherwise there's only like 30 parking stalls in parking four for ballpark four. And there's now no parking at all for any cars. So then we have them parking in the neighborhoods. So to avoid parking in the neighborhoods and parking in the street where the boat launch is supposed to be parking, then I say we open up that ballpark five, which is for the public. That's why we built it. Um, and they should be able to use it for the park and that would be car parking. That's going to solve boat parking. Hopefully that's going to solve boat launch, um, part, uh, area for them to be able to, um, launch their boats. Um, so I hope that we can get that, that ballpark five opened up as soon as possible. Does it have a security gate on it so you can close it at night?
It, it, it does have a gate. We're currently working on, on fixing that. There's been, uh, just to back up a little bit, there's been, uh, issues that had to be rectified with the overall project that was constructing all that infrastructure out there, which is why it took longer. The field will be available for rentals beginning July 1st. And, uh, so at that point, uh, you know, I, I will have to figure out what we're going to do with the parking lot. I think what we've seen demonstrated to us though, right now is that opening that parking lot didn't solve any problems for us.
But we didn't have security either at that point.
That may be true, but I think that, that when we encountered the volumes that we did encounter there, I, I, I think that, that we were just unprepared for and I would have, be hesitant to say that one security guard walking around up there is going to solve all our problems. More than that, I think that we're, we're responsible for providing a safe park. And if somebody shows up at the park and there's no park, legal parking available, then they have to consider that maybe they need to go somewhere else. There is not room to accommodate everybody at that park. You either find a legal parking spot or you go elsewhere. But the option to park illegally in the city streets or something is in fact not an option. And so if they do that, they need to be ticketed or they need to be towed.
Right.
That's it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just, uh, thank you for, for that. As, as someone who has worked that park, uh, for a number of years, uh, you know, when I was a police officer here, I can tell you that that park, it gets crazy. And it's one of the things that I have been talking about since I got on council and why we're starting to look at new ways and what new things we should be doing with the park overall. And staff has brought forward a wonderful, I think, uh, look at a potential, uh, what that park should look like in the future. I think it's been misrepresented that the park is getting bigger. Uh, that is absolutely not true. It actually is becoming a way that you can control the park because it'd be one way in, one way out. Um, the parking would be taken care of, uh, as well. And you get rid of a street that I have been waiting, thank goodness it hasn't happened yet, but for some four-year-old to get blacktopped running across the street from the beach to the snack shack. Um, like I said, thank God that hasn't happened, but I've, I've kind of been expecting it and I'm, I'm surprised at this point. The, the negatives, we can't, we can't control everybody. We can just try and control our park. I think the county park on the north side has done a pretty good job, but that's because they have one way in, one way out. They can close the park, uh, and that's what we need to be able to do. And so staff bringing that, that, uh, option forward and us kind of looking at that, I think is the way to move forward. It's going to cost money, but, um, they've been very diligent in finding that, um, there's probably going to be some ways that we can actually pay for that and, and make that happen. So I'm very excited about that. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Sullivan.
Just because we've been talking about the ordinance and its generality and because we have members of the public, I just kind of want to touch on real high level what the ordinance contains. So members of the public will know. So it establishes a restricted parking zone within a quarter mile of Allen York Park, uh, on the main arterials of Bonnie Lake Boulevard and West Taps highways. It prohibits parking in total, um, so that no cars can park. Um, within the neighborhood streets, it establishes a park by permit, uh, similar to what we do around Bonnie Lake High School. So residents can come to the city, get a free permit for their car every year, um, and still park on the streets. Um, but people without that permit would then be ticketed or towed. So it allows the residents, they'll still have access to that on-street parking in front of their house, but not for people using the park. So it kind of balances the two approaches. Um, it does significantly increase the penalty for violating the parking code. One of the things that we heard from the police last month on that weekend was that the fee was so low, it was basically paying parking to go to Seattle. So why not just pay the ticket and park? We significantly changed that. So it is now a significant deterrent, uh, for people parking there. Um, if anybody in the public wants to grab me after the meeting, I can show you the map and how it, how it will work. It's important to note that this is, it's been declared an emergency. So the emergency provisions in there, which means it needs to be passed unanimously. And if it is, it will go into effect tonight. Um, once that goes into effect, in order to ticket and tow, we actually have to put the signs up. So there will be, where there's already signs, we can charge the new fees. We can do everything in the ordinance. Where we have to order new signs, there may be a delay in that. So even though the ordinance says you can't park there until we physically put the sign in the ground, we can enforce it. If, once it's passed, that's when Ryan and I will get together with Public Works and begin to order those signs and begin to identify the critical areas to install them first.
Now pragmatic consideration that I want, because it seems like we've been focusing on just simply getting the ordinance passed right now. And we don't have our usual chief police here or anybody sergeant in arms, um, uh, to help us or help me with this. Do we have a pragmatic, um, uh, efficient, uh, plan in place or contract with a towing service that would help, uh, that when we do find the violators, we can get it quickly towed?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And then this ordinance was ran through Chief Jeter before he went out of town.
Right on.
And he was, uh, in support of it. Um, so yeah, it, it moves, it takes a step forward. Um, it also addresses what the problem that was brought up about the parking and the boat trailer parking. Um, we've now corrected that. Um, and so all of the kind of parking issues, we've now put the, 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 the legal framework in place to deal with.
Right.
Um, and then we can begin to move that on an action type plan.
Yeah.
To get forward.
It was the enforceability that I was, uh,
Yeah.
concerned about with this. Councilmember Evans.
Uh, and just to piggyback off of Jason Sullivan's, uh, comments, significant cost increase. It went from $25 to $250.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe we can add another zero.
It, uh.
All right. Uh, councilmember Swatton.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I had a question though. Um, does this come out of committee then, right? Forget. Some of the committee.
Public safety.
So from, from the public, it's public safety folks, cause I was just looking at the map. Um, you have 76th Street Court East marked as prohibited parking, right? And somebody's going to say, where is that at?
That is correct. That's the cul-de-sac that runs down by the, what we're referred to as the San Jati property. There's no homes on that street. It is simply.
Not exactly a cul-de-sac though. It's a street. It's a through street to that neighborhood.
Well, and there's, but there is a cul-de-sac bulb at the end of it.
Yeah.
Sure. And we wanted to prevent people from parking in that cul-de-sac bulb.
Yeah.
Um, because that is a firehead turnaround, which is why that is, that street's on there, but there's no houses.
Right.
That access it.
So I'm going to be okay with this ordinance, I think. But I would point out of course, that that is the street that people park on to wait for their children to go on and off the bus. So it's one of those situations. So what is the scenario there? It's kind of like one of those like, yeah, we're not going to, obviously somebody's sitting in the car. So it's probably like, we're just not going to enforce that. Is that how that kind of works, I guess, right? Cause it's going to be marked as prohibited or I guess you're going to have to mark it unfortunately.
It'll be marked as, as a prohibited parking area, but I would imagine that enforcement of that in instances such as that would be at the discretion of the officer on patrol.
Sure. Reasonable in this standard is usually involved with that sort of ordinance that would be broken or not.
And I think it is important to mention that, uh, as superintendent of Public Works, my time in, in that seat, um, I did speak with several residents who live out in that area who did express a desire to see no parking along there just because they, well, I definitely acknowledge that there is the school bus stop there. There was also an issue with people who were parking there to access the park and other areas.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. They definitely did. When you, when we had that ball field open, there wasn't any cars there, but as soon as they closed the ball field, all these cars appeared in the neighborhood.
Well, Mr. Johnstone, I'm going to send you over there to speak with the mother who, you know, tell, telling her she needs to leave and leave her hit there to get picked up and she can't watch.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I think that's a police.
All right. But now, uh, do we have any further discussion on this ordinance?
I don't even know what we're voting on anymore.
Oh, right now. If we go back, okay, it would be ordinance 2377. The, um.
The double amended one?
Yes. As amended, we had, we have had two amendments to it already. Okay. Okay. So all in favor of D three, uh, D 2377, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Mr. Sullivan, let it be known that since under the emergency statute, it has been unanimously approved, will go into effect tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Look, feel free to finish. I was just going to ask if council wants staff to bring back the Sky Island Thrive, we need to get directed to do that and when you want us to bring that.
So I would ask you to bring it back to a, the next workshop. So a couple weeks.
June 6th.
All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Let's move on. Um, item C, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2383, resolution 3155. The council motion would be to direct city staff to negotiate the fourth amendment to the WSU development agreement related to properties now owned by Midtown Properties LLC.
So moved. Second. Do we have any discussion on the matter? Councilmember Swatton.
Sorry. Um, I just had a kind of a procedural question because, uh, I don't believe that, uh, well, you know, cause I have no reason to vote to approve a thousand homes behind Safeway. Basically, uh, it's not my idea, not what we originally wrote the agreement for, and I'm not interested in negotiating for a thousand plus homes behind Safeway. But with all due respect, I don't believe the council needs to do this particular action because the council doesn't, you know, direct staff, they don't okay or not okay, the, the, the concept of the development agreement. There's no requirement for the council to do this. The mayor and our staff can do it at a development agreement and come forward with the suggested development, you know, amendment for a council approval. Why would the council have to weigh in on saying, go do that?
Hey, Mr. Sullivan, do you have an answer to that?
Yeah. I'm, I'm pulling up the codes right now.
Yep. We'll see if this is the point 0001% of the time that I'm actually right, but you know, very little chance of it.
It is on the record, councilmember Swatton.
We had it at the last workshop too.
What, um, what BLMC 1470070 states is that prior to voting on a proposed development, I'm sorry, uh, if it's necessary to determine the interest of the city council prior to expending significant time on negotiation, staff may introduce the proposal of council to discussion at a workshop. Uh, and that's basically what we've done is to bring forward the resolution, um, to see if there is the desire to spend, um, uh, city time, both, both staff time and the city attorney's time on negotiating a development agreement. Um, I would say that there is, um, you know, as I said, voting to tell us to go negotiate doesn't mean you vote for the ending product. It simply means you're saying, go forth and at least take our concerns with you and negotiate a development agreement, bring back a project that we think, we think the council can support and the developer can support. I don't know what that, I don't know if it's a thousand units. I don't know if it's 900 units. I don't know what the final number is.
Exactly.
That was their proposal.
Right.
It's when the development agreement comes back. So it is in code that we're supposed to come to council and see if there's council discussions and have time.
Right. But, but again, it's not a requirement in the code. It says that, that, that you may do that as part of the public process kind of thing. There's no requirement, you know, the, this could all have already been done. The staff and/or mayor can, can do these things. That's, there's an executive and there's a legislative body. And the executive, you know, I, I agree. I'm totally confident that Mr. Sullivan and the mayor might be able to work something out. I'm just not putting my name on something that says that go build a thousand homes. If they want to come forward and with a, a, something that they think the mayor is acceptable, then yeah. You know, that's up to the mayor to me, but you know, that's just, I'm, I know I'm kind of picky and, and strange.
Well, when, no, when I read the resolution, I was wondering about the same thing and I was going to ask, uh, Ms. Robertson about, and I believe she's studying the, uh.
She needs to bring a laptop.
I might add, this is the exact same process you use for the peak 410 development agreement.
Yeah. When it was, when there was an agreement, you know, I'm more than happy to consider.
No, actually prior to bringing forward an agreement, we brought forward the resolution that asked you if you wanted us to spend staff time and resources on preparing a development agreement to bring forward. So this is the exact same processes we've used in the past.
Right. And if it's using resources, then it is in the purview of council, I believe.
Well, we could, but there's no restriction, you know? Point to the code where it says that we have the authority to say, no, you can't do that. Point to the code where it says that we have the authority to say, no, you can't do that.
The approval proceed, and this is typically, my understanding is that this is typically how the council and staff have proceeded on past development agreements. It does say if necessary to determine the interest of the city council prior to spending significant time on negotiations, staff may, it's permissive, not required, introduce a proposal for council discussion at a council workshop. So given the discuss, given the discussion that you've had, I think it would be helpful to staff to understand the council's interest in moving forward, at least giving the staff the license to negotiate, if you will, to see if we can find something that is of, of good public benefit to the city and, and works for the developer. That's all we're asking for is to have the council's approval to let us go ahead and move forward because it does, it does impact workflow and budget. Thanks.
Hey, Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I would, I'd just like to say that I think that Mr. Sullivan has done an amazing job trying to keep in mind whenever he's going through codes and everything to, to keep the councils, this particular council's best interest and, and the city as well. I, I absolutely trust his decisions to, that he's going to make proposals based off of how this council feels about Bonnie Lake. I don't think anything's going to get out of control. And, and if it, if it comes down, I mean, it's basically, once he's done negotiating, we're going to have to approve the plans anyway. So we're going to get to see anything that happens in those negotiations before they actually get started. So I absolutely think that he'll do an amazing job for us.
From what I understand, the negotiations have been ongoing and robust.
Yeah.
We've been, we've been trying to lay the groundwork, but we haven't got into like the deep nitty-gritty of it till we got through this stuff, but we've been trying to lay the groundwork.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Orton. I think Jason's done a great job. I think he understands. I, I've had conversations with him about where I would like to see things go. I think other council members have too. If you haven't, I suggest talking to him to let him understand that. And again, whatever he brings back, we'll have to vote on anyway. So I'm all for giving him direction to go ahead and negotiate and, and look at what this looks like. I believe we can't stop growth, but hopefully we can manage it in a way that is good for Bonnie Lake and not just sprawling.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion on the matter? Okay, Councilmember McLemmons.
Yeah, I think, I think it is clear to Jason what my position has been that large, large units like this are counterintuitive to the sacrifice that all these people in single-family homes have made to live here. Most of them commute up the hill, sit in the traffic coming up the hill, have experienced the speed limit being reduced from 45 to 40, have experienced the stoplights increasing. And yeah, so I really can't, you know, there, there was an agreement that had a number that was much lower than 1,000. 1,000 to me is, I, I could, I couldn't support that at this point in time, especially when we are teetering on the brink of never building another single-family home in Bonnie Lake again, thanks to the state legislature. That's a significant bump. For those of you who aren't aware, the state passed a law that said cities over 25,000 people have to revise their zoning so you can't build single-family homes. That, that is, that's very disturbing and we aren't at that threshold yet, but this would move us significantly forward to that threshold and it is a concern of mine. So thank you.
And Mr. Sullivan, yes, could you address that issue?
We will be bringing a presentation on House Bill 1110, which is the hospital that Councilmember McLemmons is referring to. It does have a, a limit of 25,000 before it kicks in. It doesn't prohibit the building of single-family homes. It, when you get to that threshold, there are some provisions where you have to allow for at least two units on a lot. And in a quick read of the ordinance, you can consider allowing ADUs as your second unit. So the baseline condition would be no change because we already allow for houses in ADUs.
And what is an ADU, just clarification? Okay.
They're already allowed.
Mother-in-law house.
Yes.
There are some, there are some little tweaks to it that we would have to discuss about density. And we're, we're fully prepared to bring that briefing forward, but it doesn't prohibit the building of single-family homes. It simply says that we as a city have to allow for two units per lot, which we already do. So it's going to be around some of these density questions about some other housing types that we would have to allow, but that's around the density. But it doesn't mandate that you change your density. So there is some nuances to it and we're bringing a full briefing and its impact on the city council sometime in July.
Well, I would certainly appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Do we have, okay, Councilmember Orton?
I just want to say I appreciate while Mr. Sullivan has done for us, trying to get this property going forward. We've said it for years, since I've been on the council, 12 years, with nothing going on with that property. I agree with Mr. McLemmons that we shouldn't get that many homes out there. But right now we're kind of in a standoff because this is their agreement, this is where we are. At least this gives a chance for us to let, get Mr. Sullivan going forward to have discussion. Again, like you've said, we may not agree with, with it. There might be costs and benefits to the city, have this discussion too. So it's a twofold thing to help them out, to start getting something going, help us out, get something else going over there too.
Absolutely. So I'd be for this. Councilmember Swatton.
Right, yeah, and I just reiterate, my point is that, you know, the, the administration has complete ability to form the agreement or amendment to agreement and bring those forward. So all this does is put the city council's stamp on support for building a lot of homes, upwards of 1,000 homes behind Safeway. That's all it does in my mind, is put the city council's okay on that, to put the city council as saying, well, yes, the city council was in favor of this because that's clearly what it is. Because you don't have a proposal before you, you know, the, the end game is just for the developer to move their date anyways. Like I challenged them before, I told them they couldn't put on the ground what they needed, what they thought they could build. And, you know, they're, they're here. They're here because their agreement expires. They're here because the Bonnie Lake City Councils, including myself, failed to properly zone that previously. You know, they're here because they can't put the product on the ground that they need to be able to put on the ground financially. So it's just going to change for more homes. They should build what they have the legal rights to build today.
But we have to approve that or turn it down too still.
Eventually, yeah.
End up being where we are right now.
Eventually.
At least we'll hear what they have.
There's nothing preventing the mayor and/or city staff, which should do an excellent job in negotiating this without the city council stamp is my point.
Okay, any further discussion on the matter? Okay, are we ready for a vote? All in favor of Resolution 3155, say aye.
Aye.
So who, who do we have as ayes? We have the three on my right.
Tell me this is not.
All opposed.
This is a resolution, I like it.
Okay.
We have all opposed.
All right, uncle. I'm going to be an aye. You can break this time.
Okay, okay, it's 42. Okay.
Orton said she was an aye.
Okay, yes, so 42 on the matter. Mr. Sullivan, the only thing I'm going to direct at this point is you don't bring a baseball bat to these negotiations, okay?
Roger.
We brought Nerf guns last year.
Okay, seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
We have a next session. Yeah, you have.
Right, but it's a closed session and I was actually fine. I was able to do this.